I call this January the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Lincoln County Commissioners to order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Jeremiah Thomas. Jeremiah is the minister of the Prosperity A R P Church. And our pledge tonight will be given by Eva Kate Whorley. Eva Kate's a third grader at Unity. She loves basketball and dance. She attends Hope Assembly Church, and she's the daughter of Erin and Jessica Whorley. If you would, please stand for our invocation. Remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you. Thank you that we're able to gather here tonight. Thank you for these leaders in the room. Thank you for these constituents in the room. Lord, thank you that we are in a country that can not only worship you freely, but can govern by due process of election. So, God, thank you. Thank you for all that is happening tonight. God, I would pray for wisdom for our leaders. I would pray for wisdom for our constituents. As much business can be done tonight, and yet, Lord, when tempers are lost, no business gets done. So, God, would you bless us? Bless us with patience and peace as we get done what needs to get done. And may we do it all for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Jeremiah, thank you. Eva Kate, thank you. We will not be using our tablets tonight for this meeting, so our clerk will call the roll. Please answer that when your name is called. Phyllis?
Coley. Sanders. Walker. Brown. Caldwell.
Here.
Rogers. Ashley. Ewing. Mitchell.
Here.
Bradford.
Here.
Tackett.
Here.
Spray.
Here.
Eldridge.
Here.
Nix.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Guntherberg.
Here.
Frazran.
Present.
Hambrick.
Here.
Walt, Rose Walter. Twenty-two present and two absent.
Twenty-two and two. All right. I'm going to read the announcement we got because it does affect all of you commissioners. Attending county government days in February the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, we need in our office the confirmation number of your reservations and an address for the hotel, and if your spouse is attending. Beginning with the post-legislative conference, which is in usually Mount May, middle of May, that's the one that's in Gatlinburg where we find out what the legislature did during this term, you will be responsible for making your own hotel reservations and making your registration too, and also registering your spouse. You need to obtain a tax-exempt form from Finance Department, and then, once you get back, you file your expenses with Finance and you will get reimbursed. So, make sure you do those things. Our office will continue to put out the information about the meetings. You should be receiving those directly, though, but it's just got a little overwhelming for Diane in trying to get all this done, that we appreciate those that are timely with their response, but she has a lot of other things to get done, too, besides that. So, let her know about the things for the February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth meeting in Nashville, and then, in the May meeting will be the next one on that. Any questions? Our next item, I would entertain a motion for approval of those December twentieth minutes from the commission meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made that motion. Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Frazran makes a second. Any questions on those? All in favor of approval of how they were printed and sent to you, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received twelve monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Commissioner Spray makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Nix makes a second. Any questions on that? All in favor, receipt of those acknowledgement, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next item's consideration for approval to elect and fill three vacancies on the Industrial Coordinating Committee. Those three terms would expire in January twenty twenty-seven. Now, here is who is currently serving on that committee. Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Eldridge, and Commissioner Spray. The floor is now open for nominations to fill those, either with the ones that are already on there, or anybody else you see fit. I will. Okay. A nomination for Cunningham, Eldridge, and Spray has been nominated. Can I have a second of those three? Any other nominations? I would entertain a motion that nomination cease and those three be elected by acclamation. Commissioner Taylor makes that motion. Do I have a second on that acclamation? Commissioner Haynes seconds that. All in favor of election by acclamation, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously elected by acclamation. Thank you. Our next one, Ms. Amy Byrd, Director of Main Street. We're ready for your report.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me tonight, and thank you, Commissioners. We have been very, very busy on Main Street, which is why I have my tennis shoes on, because I just run the square about twenty times a day. The last time I was here, I talked to y'all about us launching a new membership management and website through Locable, and I'm happy to report that we are the most productive and efficient Main Street that they have onboard. They have over a hundred Main Streets across the country, and we have an eighty percent participation rate, and on average, other Main Streets have about a twenty-five percent participation rate. So, there are a lot of other statistics that we're just killing it at, but for the most part, it's, you know, keeping our downtown engaged and communicating with them, and we're very excited with the participation that we've had, and not just downtown, but also the businesses out in the county. I'm sure that y'all have seen that we are going to be moving first Fridays to first Saturdays. I had a survey put on our website, and we had over three hundred and fifty responses, and it was around seventy percent of shoppers, merchants, and vendors wanted to move it to first Saturday. So, hopefully, that'll be a little bit easier, and we can get out of y'all's way on Fridays, but I still would like to bring up, we would love it so much if you could have the parking spots numbered. It would make our jobs a lot easier. Small Business Saturday we had in November, and we were recognized as a neighborhood champion by American Express, so they gave us free signs and some marketing materials that we could market Small Business Saturdays. And from the feedback that I got from the merchants, it was the largest Small Business Saturday they've had since they, since some of them have opened. We had a membership mixer in December. Thank you, Bill, for coming. Again, just trying to keep people, our merchants, engaged, and not just with Main Street, but also with each other, because, you know, if one merchant learns one thing, it's great to share it with others. Our Youth Leaders Council has been doing great. This Thursday, we'll actually be here at the courthouse, and they'll be learning about county government. We're working on our accreditation with the state and also for our national accreditation. It's due by the end of the month, and so, I think, Bill, I have to get you to sign off on something, but I will give y'all an update on how that goes at the next meeting that I'm invited to. We introduced a new membership level this past month, and it's called Kid Business. We've had five or six kids sign up, and it's just a dollar for their membership, and the only reason why it's a dollar is because I had to have a placeholder on the website, but just trying to get young people involved and active in the community, and also, you know, they're an entrepreneur at six years old, they're probably going to come back and do great things here. So, that's one of the ways that we're trying to get the youth involved. We are also gonna, we're also offering merchant minis for businesses, not just downtown, but also out in the county, to get some professional photographs done by one of our Main Street members, and they're doing this at like a huge discounted price, so I would really encourage any of the businesses to have some professional photos taken through Main Street. We just hosted our grand ball on Saturday night, and thank you to Commissioner Hambrick for getting the country club ready for us. It was a very successful and great event, and we are looking forward to that, you know, being, continuing to be an annual event. The theme this year was a red carpet affair, and the Hollywood hills don't compare to the Tennessee hills. So, we had Fayetteville, I hope y'all have seen this, because it was my favorite thing ever, but you know the big Hollywood letters, the big white letters? We had Fayetteville spelled out on the rocks at the country club, and everybody loved getting their picture taken in front of that. The month of February, we're doing I Heart, we're doing a campaign for I Heart Main Street, so it'll be the entire month of February, and I have these paper hearts that our merchants are going to be selling for a dollar each, and they just write on there what they love most about Fayetteville, and then they can post them in their windows. So, the idea, hopefully, is to have all these merchants around the square with the sweetheart, sweethearts in their windows, just to, you know, be attractive and draw people in. We're also doing the Chocolate Walk in February. So, if you purchase a ticket to the Chocolate Walk, it's twenty-five dollars. I think we have eleven or twelve participating merchants so far. You get a bag that says Shop Small, Support Local, and the Q R code takes you to the Main Street website, and then, all the participating merchants will have something free that's chocolate, and they can either consume it in their shop, or they can take it home in their bags, but it will be only for ticket holders. You have to have a wristband to get the free chocolate. But again, you know, February is kind of a slow month as far as people getting out because of the weather, and so hopefully, this will bring more people downtown. I think that's it for me. I would love for y'all to sign up for our newsletter. We have two hundred and fifty-five subscribers right now to our newsletter, which is a really, really big deal for a program that just launched in November through Locable, so I'd love for y'all to stay up to date on what we're doing. I'm sure I missed a hundred things that we've been working on, but we are working hard and working on a lot, so thank y'all so much for your support. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Amy? I'll check on that, about numbering those.
Yes, Bill, please. I'm begging you. That would save us a lot of time.
Well, I think the sheriff's here, you know, he can trump anything I say, so if he doesn't have a problem with it, we'll coordinate with the city, because the outside section of the, even the inner part, is actually city property.
Okay, wonderful, and we have maps that we've used for other events, and we would have like a letter in front of the number for north, south, east, or west, so the people aren't just, you know, driving around looking for a number, they know which side it's on.
Okay.
But I would love to, love to get that going.
Thanks for all you do.
Before Slawburger Festival, oh yeah, Slawburger Festival is coming up, April fifteenth. We just had our first meeting, and so, we're kickstarting that, and hopefully, more details will come out soon, but that's it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. Commissioner Bryant, I believe we're ready for the Budget Committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County met January the third, two thousand twenty-three, at six o'clock P M. at Lincoln Central Academy. All members were present. Chairman Doug Cunningham opened the meeting. Item one, County Mayor. One A is planning and zoning. Motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve the planning and zoning request of twenty-three thousand, three dollars needed to increase personnel.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Sanders seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item.
Item B. Mayor Newman advised the committee that Kevin Owen from the city has been handling the animal control issue, but that we are going to have to have the state fire marshal come down and inspect the building and advise us on what needs to be done and give us a timeline with which to get this work done. Information item. Item two, Sandy Midcalf, Lincoln County Sheriff's Department, CFO. Two A, effective January the third, twenty twenty-three, the jail is contracted with quality correctional healthcare. That's an information item. B, the sheriff requests approval to use the Gov Deal sales of one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, plus the I C Solutions sign-on bonus of fifty thousand dollars, and the remaining two thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents in the drug fund to purchase an X-ray machine at a cost of approximately one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve the purchase of an X-ray machine and using the money from Gov Deal sales, fifty thousand dollars from I C Solutions, and the additional dollars from the drug fund.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Frazran makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor seconds that. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, sheriff requests approval to apply for the Violent Crime Intervention Grant with the City of Fayetteville. The cost of two hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars will be shared with the city and is reimbursable. There will be a recurring cost of two thousand twenty-five dollars for licensing shared with the city. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve applying for the Violent Crime Intervention Grant with the City of Fayetteville.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Ewing makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young seconds that. Any questions, comments? It's an application, it's, it's, we're approving them to apply for the grant. Yes, sir. Any other questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item three, Tammy Painter, property assessor. This is about the Farley contract, the mapping contract. A motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to approve the Farley contract for mapping services.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner, Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young seconds that. Any questions? Okay, we have one abstention. Commissioner Douglas, he works in that department. Anybody else? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? That will be twenty-one positive votes, a yes, and one abstention. Next item, Commissioner Bryant?
Item four, Finance Director, four A. Budget calendar guidance and instructions are attached. We had a commotion, motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hambrick, and passed unanimously to approve the attached budget, calendar, guidance, and instruction.
Okay, but entertain a motion for approval of that budget calendar. At that. Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions on that calendar? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
B, one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Caldwell, and passed unanimously to approve one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendments.
What's the will of the commission on these amendments? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Nick seconds it. Any questions on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
C, the E P I K service from Granite Communications to replace A T and T fax lines at the schools. This is a three-year contract. Motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hambrick, and passed unanimously to approve the attached E P I K services from Granite Communications to replace A T and T fax lines at the schools.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sanders makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor makes second. Any questions on this contract? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, financials. A motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to acknowledge acceptance of the financials.
What's the will of the commission on this? Commissioner Nix makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions on those enclosed financials? All in favor of approval of acceptance, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item five, Chairman Cunningham. Five A. Chairman Cunningham informed the committee that the Budget Subcommittee had hired attorney Sean Henry with T E W firm to represent the county on planning and zoning issues. It's an information item.
Okay.
B, Chairman Cunningham stated that Commissioner Taylor requests a summary of accounting of the one oh one general fund and COVID money on a quarterly basis. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously that the Finance Department present a summarized accounting of the one oh one general fund along with a quarterly update on COVID money.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hambrick makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Haynes makes second. Any questions on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Finance Director Trentum informed the committee that we are getting proposals back on our compensation study, which is a Sauer study, and we have about five interested companies. That's information item. Commissioner Taylor asked that the, or asked about the home health slash hospice building on the bypass, and is there a plan for that building? An answer that was given was the new road is going to take up some of that property, and until then, there'll be no decisions made on that property. I suppose that's an information item. Being no further business to be presented, motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Bryant. Next item, our notary publics. Madam Clerk?
I have Steve Broadway and Moniki Jones by Commissioner Young, David Christopher O'Connor and Emily Ann Creeson by Commissioner Cunningham, Melissa Beddingfield by Commissioner Eldridge, Rachel Gomez by Commissioner Hambrick, Shannon Durinberger by Commissioner Young, Tammy Haney by Commissioner Spray, and Joseph C. Johnson by Commissioner Douglas.
Any additions? Entertain a motion that that list be approved, then. Commissioner Mitchell makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young seconds it. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of approval, that list, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Now declare the business of the commission, the new business, open, and I have three items. The first of which, the Financial Management Committee had a meeting. You should have received this packet, and what it refers to is the right-of-ways that was mentioned previously, one of those being over there at that hospice home health location. There are two right-of-ways that are owned by Lincoln County that will be affected by the road at the new Beard Mill River Crossing. One is a two point zero seven, excuse me, point two zero seven acres, and that's on the northeast corner of the county highway department, along Kidd Road there. The other one is on the eastern border of the old Lincoln County Health Hospice and Home Health location, and that's a point one four nine. I would answer any questions if you've got them on where those are located, but the Financial Management Committee voted to donate those to the state, because that project's about a twenty-five million dollar project that's financed by the state for that new bridge and approaches. Any questions on that? I would entertain a motion that we donate those two small properties to the state for their construction of this road and bridge. Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant, did you second that? Second. Any questions on that? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. The second item that I've got, Commissioner Tackett is asked to be replaced on the Main Street Board. She has some family obligations, hopefully will be short-term, but she's asked that she be taken off of that. And let me tell you who are eligible just by the numbers of the committees they're on. The following commissioners are eligible to be on another committee. Commissioner Caldwell, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Ashley, Commissioner Eldridge, Commissioner Bryant, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Hambrick, and Commissioner Rose Walter are eligible. So, from that list, I would entertain any nominations that you would like to make for the Main Street Board. Okay, Commissioner Rose Walter has been nominated. Any other nominations?
I have a question. When is that board, or that, when is that committee meeting? What day is it?
Amy's, has Amy left? No, she's, she left, okay. Okay. Do we have other nominations? I'd entertain a motion that she be elected by acclamation, then, if y'all see fit. Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second for acclamation election of Rose Walter to that position? Commissioner Spray makes that motion. All in favor of electing Commissioner Rose Walter as our Main Street Board member, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Congratulations. The next item, Commissioner Haynes, I think you have a recognition. And I think Ms. Hannah is going, updating us on animal control, and you have three minutes.
Yes, sir, let me start my timer, start, whatever.
Hannah, Hannah Faulkner.
Hello, my name is Hannah Gray Faulkner, and I am new to the Humane Society Board. We really want to start this year out on a positive note, and I want to give you the shelter statistics for two thousand twenty-two, as well as January so far. I hope to do reports like this on a quarterly basis, if not monthly, and would love to be on the agenda to keep you guys informed. We hope that this will provide transparency and accountability on all parts. So, for two thousand twenty-two, the total intake of animals was eight hundred and sixty-nine. The adoptions were six hundred and nine. Reclaimed pets, fifty. Transferred, a hundred and seventy-seven to different rescue partners. Forty-one euthanized. We were able to microchip four hundred and ninety-five due to a grant we received. We were able to vaccinate seven hundred and three animals, also due to the Pet Co. Love Vaccine Program. We were able to spay and neuter four hundred and nineteen animals due to the Community Foundation Grant Vouchers that we receive. So far in January, since January one, we've had a total intake of forty-one animals, twenty-five adoption, seven reclaimed pets, six transferred to rescue partners, five euthanized, and the number of A C O calls, animal control calls from the county has been a total of twelve. We have had a total of thirty intakes from the county, nine from the city, and two owner surrenders. And not so great news, one of our animal control calls the first week of January consisted of a hoarding case on L. Mitchell Road in Flintville, where a renter left behind twenty-plus cats. We have been able to intake thirteen of those, and we're working with rescue partners for the remaining eight. We also had two bike, two pipes burst over Christmas Eve when the temperatures got really cold, and thankfully, we had worker, staff members that were able to come and fix those pipes on Christmas Eve. So, some other good news, we're participating this year in a research in a research grant study, um, that tracks the activity of shelter dogs as well as DNA test for dogs. So you will see that on our Facebook page. It's been fun to guess what uh breed this shelter dog is. So you'll see those posts. Um, we are also continuing, continuing the Pet Co. Love Vaccine Program, and it's open to the whole community. Anyone can bring pets in. There's no qualifications and we can update your cats and dogs on their vaccines. Um, so we also are um working on the Community Foundation Grant, which we received later last year, and it'll allow us to place almost seven hundred microchips um in animals to help reunite them with owners. Uh, we have also restarted our membership program and you can join on our website, or there's a form you can download and send in that's for the Humane Society. Um, and lastly, I would really love to um have, we would really love to have someone from the county on our board. We would appreciate your insight. We would appreciate your support. Um, if anyone is interested, please let me know. If anyone would like to tour the facility, I would personally love to give you a tour. And um if anyone is wanting to volunteer, we of course will always accept volunteers. Um, we really want this to be a good year. We want to work together. Um, we're on the same team, believe it or not. Um, we're in the same community. So um, if there's any questions you have, please let me know. I'm happy to give out my cell phone number so you can contact me directly. Um, if there's anything that's not in this report that you all would like to hear, please let me know and I'll present it next time um that I'm allowed to come.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
You had eight hundred and sixty-nine animals over what period of time?
Uh, that was in twenty twenty-two. So that was from January one to December thirtieth.
Okay. So these figures you gave were that for the whole year?
That was for the whole year. Mm-hmm. So far in January, we've, we've had forty-one[1419.04][1419.07]intakes in two weeks. So that's a lot.
And if you would, if you'd uh get that to our office, we'll get that out to all the commissioners of those facts for just, and uh, we won't limit you to three minutes if you get on the agenda, cause you're, you're welcome to be on quarterly for an update on that.
Okay.
And I'll have to say that uh our complaints in our office, we have not had a single complaint in over two months now. So that's welcome in our office. So.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Thank you.
We'll take it. Thank you guys so much.
I got the, one question. You've had a statistic for reclaimed pets?
Yes.
Is that somebody that just brings their dog and then changes their mind?
No. Um, so reclaimed is um animals that have been picked up um by animal control or brought in with no identification. Uh, we put the post out, uh, we have to hold them for a certain amount of days, and then we put the post out on social media. Um, and it, we get a ton of shares that way. Um, and people will come in and claim their pet. They have to show proof of identification. But yeah, it pretty significant for, there was fifty in uh the year of, of last year, and so far we've had seven this year. So.
Just curious, the difference between that and adopting?
Yeah, no, no, no. That, so that's just a reclaimed pet. Hmm? Okay. Anyone else? Thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I got under new business. Yes, sir. Okay. Jeremy, you got three minutes.
Okay, I'm not, I'm, I'm here to talk about Jack Daniels for a few seconds. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. I think everybody knows both sides of the argument. Um, just a few concerns that I've heard expressed on, on this side of the House is transparent communication resolves most things. So I hope everybody can remain decent on both sides without being condescending or accusatory as this thing comes to a close. But um, what I would like to ask the commission or maybe the mayor is that when public announcements are made for either primary meetings or subcommittee meetings, that it comes with some kind of uh content or context. Uh, a lot of times it's just maybe the meeting date and what committee's meeting. Uh, if we could add context for what the meeting's gonna, um, be, what's gonna be talked about during the meetings. Uh, I think that would go a long way in terms of transparent communication with the public. Um, that's really all I've got. And um, there was a concern that being talked about, and I think some of the commissioners have heard it, probably some of the people in the audience have heard it, about sneaking a vote in under new business and not as a primary part of an agenda. Uh, I would hope that we wouldn't go that direction, and I just wanted to say it for the record. I appreciate being able to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing on that, when we advertise a meeting, if it's a regular scheduled meeting, it's just any business. If it's a special call meeting, we do have to qualify what will be discussed on that. So unless it's a special meeting, anything can pretty much come up. If we put in there what it's about, it limits us what can be uh actual taken action on.
Okay.
That's like, this meeting, anything can happen.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I think, I think the, the example would be the, the subcommittee meeting on uh budget.
Yes, sir.
I think when that announcement was put out there, it was the date, the time, and what committee was meeting. I don't know that there was context or content added to that announcement.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not for sure on that.
I don't have it before me, but I've read it and I didn't, I don't recall seeing it.
But, but that came up under budget. Was that not in the budget meeting that was, that was done? I'm not sure, Commissioner Cunningham.
I'm not sharpshooting either. I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm trying to remember in November, if that was just a motion that was made when we were discussing the issue on the floor. I don't.
The motion was made in this session of the procedure of what they're supposed to do and to hire that. I don't remember, you know, um, and that came out, I think in the December budget meeting is when it was announced, I believe. So it occurred in one of those you can do anything meetings uh when that occurred, I believe.
November, I think.
November's when the, it was voted on in this meeting.
Right.
To proceed on that. Then I think it was the budget meeting in December when those names were announced.
Remember, the committee were announced at the December budget meeting.
Yeah.
The hiring was announced at the January.
Right. Yeah, I, I understand it fully now. I think there were some questions on the front end of that. But on the announcement itself, it was just, it was pretty, pretty basic. Like it didn't have what was gonna be discussed uh in the subcommittee.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anything else under new business? Okay, I don't, who made the motion? Commissioner Bradford made it. Commissioner Rogers seconded it. All in favor of dismissal, adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We're adjourned.